Good evening and welcome to the October 6th, sorry, it's been a long day, to the October 6th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas is posted on the Dover Sherburne School District website. Please note that this meeting will be recorded and be aware that anything that you broadcast will be captured by the recording. I believe that we're going to start tonight with community comments. And I know we have some folks joining us in the audience tonight who may wish to make community comments. Just with regard to that, I'm just going to read, read our community comment statement. We're going to take community comments tonight for no more than 20 minutes. If, if we go for that long, I don't anticipate based on the amount of people that we will, but just so that you know, it's not to quiet down comments, it's really just so that we can attend to the business that we need to conduct tonight. Community comments are an opportunity for members of our community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief and that you move your discussion forward by adding new information. Try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. For community comments, please virtually raise your hand and wait to be called on. You, um, yep, yeah, use the hand raise or if you want to unmute your video and actually raise your hand, that's fine as well. Um, when you speak, please begin by stating your name and whether or not you live in Dover, Sherburne, or Boston and your address. Community comments are an opportunity for school committee members to listen to members of the community, but it's not a forum for us to answer questions or engage in a debate. Once public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we'll move on to our other business and unsolicited comments from the community will not, no longer be permitted. The standing operator, this is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. Thank you. And is there anyone in the community tonight who wishes to make a comment? All right, one, twice. Okay, moving forward then. Thank you.
There Maggie, there is one hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi Janice, I don't know why I can't see that on my thing. Um, we would love to have your comment. Oh, I can see Mr. Guarini as well. So we're going to hear from Ms. Barry and then we'll hear from Mr. Guarini.
Okay, good evening and thanks for this opportunity. Mr. Herman was supposed to be joining us, so I'm guessing he had ran into a snag. It is that dinnertime bedtime for most of us. So hopefully he'll join us. I contacted him. But in his absence, I just wanted to pop on to say, first of all, thank you for your support so far this year and we've had a great start to the school year. One challenge, as you know, we've been facing in the arts is the, the state guidelines were a little bit more restrictive for the arts and other subject areas. I do apologize. I've got a three-year-old sitting next to me, so bear with me. And I, we've been doing our best to, to follow those guidelines and the direction of the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee, waiting for the first six weeks of school before we could follow those guidelines and play outdoors. So we're hoping that that continue and moves forward, that at the six-week mark, which according to my calendar would be the week of October 26th, we would be moving forward with the ability to perform and play and sing outdoors. So we haven't heard that we wouldn't be able to and we expect that that will be a go for that week. And we have a number of questions to make sure we have a safe start at that time unless we're allowed to begin earlier. And so I just, I ask for your support and that we can move forward with this opportunity for our students. We're, this is kind of like telling an English teacher to teach English with no books or a science teacher to teach a science without a lab. We're, we're trying to do our best with virtual band and chorus without the ability to sing and play in person indoors or outdoors right now. And so we're, we look forward to that opportunity. And we've seen examples of this happening following the state guidelines at Westwood High School, Hopkinton High School. And I have pictures if anybody would like to see how they're safely doing that in those districts. And we expect to be one of those at that six-week mark. And if we're not, we would hope that we would have that conversation about how to move forward safely in this environment. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. Mr. Guarini, you had your hand up as well.
Thank you. I'm Mac Guarini, live in Sherburne. Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I'm part of about 20 parents that sent a letter over to Dr. Keough and to the board, the committee and also to the two boards of health. And, um, you know, love the progress that we've made, so I applaud all that. Really happy that the note came out talking about the opportunity to get back into school more for the kids. I think the challenge that when I talked to a bunch of the parents and the reason we all got together is we just don't, you know, the idea that the, the high school and the middle school won't be back until January. You know, the, the opportunities, you got to see the way the kids are when they know they're going in school and they have that chance to socialize, the chance to learn. The flip side of that, when they're not in school, we see it in my, I see it in my kids, I see it in their friends and I see it in the kids that I coach. You know, I stay in contact with those kids year round and there's just a general malaise that's setting in. And I just, you know, in some conversations I had with different people on the, on the committee today and other folks, it's, you know, I, I get that there's a health issue out there, but that health issue extends beyond just the physical and the, the COVID issues. There's a mental health issue here too as well and, and there's a balance that we need to strike. And I would just really hope, and I, and I love the way that we had a great community dialogue around sports. And we got to a better place on sports and I would hope that, you know, with where we are as a, as a community with COVID in terms of, you know, the progress we made, the, 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 the baby steps we're making at the school. I know that we can do better with masks and things like that, but I would love to get a real view of how we get those middle schoolers and high schoolers back sooner and get them into, you know, that four, if we can get to that four-day that a lot of the privates do where we can still clean the schools. I think the advantages for us to be a leader on that will have massive potential for our kids. And, and you know, that's what this is all about. I, I get it. I'm friends with many teachers through this. You know, I understand some of those concerns. I think a lot of that can be mitigated. We can still do everything at 5.5 feet. You know, we've got a lot of advantages with our HVAC that is in, from what I heard in previous calls is, is just fantastic. And, and I think with the leadership from, you know, you, Dr. Keough and Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellitt, I just would love to get this debate going about how do we set the, you know, set the table here for our kids to get back and really to, you know, set a, you know, be a, be a shining star for, you know, the rest of the state to show we care about the kids, we want to get the best education for them, but we also want to give them a great community experience as well. So I just wanted to float that out there. If anybody wants the copy of the note, more than happy to send it along, but every, a lot of people in this call should already have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarini. All right, before we close community comments, any last folks wanted to add something new? Okay, um, okay, we're going to move on to our reports and our first report is an update from Dr. Keough.
Thank you very much, Maggie. We are definitely off to a good start and I think we're all very encouraged by that. We are essentially in our third plus week. So I think looking back at the past six months, there were certainly times where I had serious doubts about having any in-person learning at all. And so I'd have to say that given where we are, it's been a huge success. And that's a tribute to, to our school committees and all the people who are in leadership roles in this district. That said, you know, we, we are where we are, I believe, in large part because we have benefited from having the wisdom of, of people in the field, professions in the field of medicine on our Health and Hygiene Subcommittee. And I take that as probably one of the most important components of this process. Without their, their insights, without their tracking of the data and providing us with that benchmark data, without their giving us a set of metrics as to when we would return and under what circumstances, I personally think we, I know I would be lost. And to that end, I just texted a, a pretty extensive group of superintendents around 20 today to ask them where they were on returning of students. And the exception of maybe one of those communities, we're out ahead of the curve. So as much as I appreciate the, the desire of people in the community for more, some folks have said, we want K-5 back right away and we want six through eight back and a week or two after that in high school, a week or two after that. As much as I appreciate that, I also balance that against what the, what the, I would call it wisdom, but certainly the expertise of the doctors that we have leaned on throughout this whole process who say, we need to be careful. We need to be careful. We need to go slowly. We need to see first and foremost whether or not the in-person education results in any flare-ups. We need to see whether or not the institution of athletics has an impact on flare-ups. We, we need to, as we move forward with performing arts, which I suspect we will in some form or another, I'm not sure that we're ever going to get support for singing, quite frankly, but as we move forward with these things, we have to take time to see what the impacts are and that unfortunately just takes time. It's not like, well, we had a good week, so we should be able to do this. And I think I would urge caution for us as a school community as we, as we look to return, as much as I understand and appreciate people's desire to come back. And to that end, I think our even considering after the four or five-week mark of bringing any kids back in on a more full-time basis was a big accomplishment. But if you think about what we're really trying to do, our goal is to have kids in every day, all days. That's the, that's our first number one priority. And so we've got to, we've got to keep our eye on the ball and figure out how we can do that. I'm not opposed to trying to tweak their timeline somewhat, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do it without their blessing. And I do think that the Health and Hygiene folks would like to support us in any way that they can. And I think they definitely understand the interest in families and getting kids back as soon as possible. But all of it has to be coupled against the fact that we have teachers who are working with these kids as well, who also have concerns. And remember, just remember, just a few weeks back, we were in a place where the Teachers Association didn't want any return. None. And now four weeks in, we're talking about, or three and a half weeks in, we're talking about bringing some kids back in four days a week. So there's a very difficult balance here and it's all driven by science and trying to be safe. So as much as I get it, totally appreciate the, the feedback from the families, the, the folks on the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee, quite frankly, and have been my go-to people on these kinds of questions because I'm just not knowledgeable to make those kinds of decisions. Not knowledgeable enough about the science and the medicine and, and what the threat is from COVID-19 in a way that they are. So that's, you know, that's the, the biggest issue on the plate of the superintendent as we speak. And I'll, I'll give you more of an update in that regard next week when we have our joint school committee meeting. We, we have had, you know, certainly challenges with our opening around traffic issues. John and Scott and Ann and Anna Hurley have been out there doing everything they can. Dawn has worked with them and Monique to make sure our buses are lined up in a way that we can get them in and out as quickly as possible while also adapting to the fact that we probably have increased our, our family traffic by, I don't know, 50 or 60%. So there are, and I, by the way, I want to thank the Dover Police especially and the Sherburne Police, but especially the Dover Police at the region for their, their help with directing traffic. Otherwise it could be even worse. And so that's gone well. We expect to have more information soon about our HVAC findings. Mr. Guarini's right that the preliminary reports look good, but we're not completely out of the woods. There are some things that we'll need to rectify and we expect to see that in the more official report. But there was nothing, at least at this stage, indicating that, you know, we had to call things off. So that, that is good news. And so had a chance to get out there, see the kids in action. It, it, there is no question that, that having the kids back in has made so much of a difference and has bumped morale for all of us. We're all feeling a lot better about it. You look out the windows, you see the kids. They're happy. You talk to the kids, they're happy. They, they do want to be in. There's no question about it. And so we, we, we need to keep our eye on that ball and keep on pushing for that. And with a steady pressure, we just, we just want to be really, really thoughtful and careful about not getting over too overly enthusiastic because we, we can't, we can't let our guard down against this virus. So that's pretty much where we're at. I'll give you a bit more, as I said, at the joint school committee meeting next week, but that's, that's where we are.
Thanks, Dr. Keough. Do I have any questions or comments from members of the committee?
I have a quick, yeah, question. How has compliance been with, you know, what does it look like? And how much are the teachers having to sort of corral kids and, you know, how are all these things working?
That's a great question, Lynn. And, and you know, John, I know John and Scott will, will say a few words in a few minutes. But I think it's been, it's been challenging because our kids love each other. They want to be near each other. They're, we're, it's, it's, uh, it's just human nature to gravitate towards each other. And I've seen that as a kind of, I feel like Piaget, you know, walking around the campus because the kids don't even notice me and I'm noticing them. And, uh, and I think that it's hard for them to stay away from each other, but I think that John and Ann and Scott and Anna have done a really good job of working with the teachers to remind them on a regular basis. I have no idea how often they've probably said it, but I would imagine it's multiple times a day that we are obligated to, to keep our, our distance because it's one of those layers of protection, right? The hand washing, the sanitizing, the, the cleaning of the building, the ventilation, the masks and the distancing. And we, we need to keep all of those layers up. That's part of keeping our guard up is all of those layers. So I think that's hard for the kids, but I had a conversation with five boys last week who were sitting on a bench in a high school upperclassman. And I said, so what do you think? You know, I mean, how's it feel to be back? Are you happy about it? Yes, we're really happy, Dr. Keough. We're glad to be back. And what about the masks? Is that, is that, you know, super annoying or? No, 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 it's fine. It's not a big deal at all. And so I said, so what about remote versus in-person? Which would be your preference? And they, each and every one of them said, we would much rather be in person. So, you know, the, the, the folks have written to me about that. They're right. The kids really, really want to be back. They're not hiding it and they're, they're coming right out and telling us. It's just, you know, it's a, it's a tricky balance, but I'd say, I don't know if John or Scott would add anything to that in terms of the kids and, and they're honoring our, our requests.
I would, I would say that they have been fantastic in, in, you know, they are, as you said, Dr. Keough, they're, they're very, they, they are, they want to be next to each other, but when they're reminded that they need to keep space, they keep space. They're very respectful of teachers, of administrators, of bus drivers. We've had, I think, it might be two students that we've had to speak to about not wearing a mask, but they immediately put them on. It's not that they don't want to, it's just the habit of not having them on. So I'm, I'm thrilled and I wish we could have them back every day. It's a, it's a whole lot more fun having kids in the building than, than not. I'm a kid myself, so.
Kind of why you're in this business.
Exactly.
Uh, if there's anything you'd add to that, John?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, first of all, I, I completely agree. The kids are definitely very excited to be back and you can, you could sense that enthusiasm. I could count on my hand the number of times where I've had to mention to a kid about putting their mask back on or anything and it's never been in the building. So that's really been great. I did mention in my report, we're struggling with break and lunch, you know, I, I, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. That's been a, a time when it's been hard and I've had to remind kids and we've put things out to the students through emails. We've done it through the PA and Ann and I will continue doing it. But that's been a challenge. That has been a challenge. The kids are, as Scott said, they're super respectful when you ask them, but then two minutes later, you're going back to that same group because they're literally right on top of each other. The upperclassmen are doing a better job. They're more mature. I think maybe there's a greater understanding. I don't know. Freshmen and sophomores' break and lunch has been a struggle. And my concern, and I'm hoping that it's a behavior that gets better because right now the weather's nice and they've been outside. When we get inside, things are that much tighter. So, um, you know, very, very positive. And even when you do talk to them, they get it. They're very compliant. It's just, that's just one of the things that, whether they're not accustomed to it or it's just hard for them to, to be, make it become a norm. That's been, that's been a challenge for us. It has.
You know, along those lines, if I could just add one quick point, you know, I am, some people may not realize, it's not like we advertise it, but for our lunches, because the kids are taking their masks off, they have to sit six feet apart and they have to be facing in the same direction. That's not exactly a, an enjoyable social setting. And as a result, when we have a nice day, like I think it was Friday when I was out there, it was a beautiful day, there was no one in the caf, not one kid. And so, you know, the cold weather is right around the corner. It could happen anytime. We could have a frost. We could have really cool temperatures. And once that happens, those kids have to move in to a place where they can eat comfortably and their masks will be off. So this is one of those things that I'm talking about where we just have to make sure that it's safe, that we can do it safely. Quite honestly, we can only fit, is it 80 kids in the cafeteria at a time, John?
Not even, it's about 60.
60.
62.
But then we have the gym set up.
So then we have the gym set up. So, uh, we're using half the gym for alternative, alternate seating as well, which is fine, but when we think about bringing back the whole school, uh, four or five days, we have, that's one of those logistical issues that has to be tackled. So when you look at the state's guidance that I shared in the, the letter I sent home Monday, sent yesterday, man, it's, it's like I'm in a time warp. Yesterday, it does say in there, if you, if you Google that little piece, you'll see that their guidance is really clear in saying that if you can do it. So yes, we are in the green right now and if we can do it logistically, if we can make it work, many places cannot. They can't fit the kids in the classroom or they don't have the HVAC or they don't have a place to feed them. If we can do it, that's our goal. But this is one of those things, we haven't really fully grappled with it yet because the weather, quite honestly, has cooperated with us. Is that true, John and Scott? Or have we really tested it on a, a really lousy day yet?
We haven't had one.
No, we, our kids have been outside predominantly every day. There are a few kids have stayed in on one or two days, but most kids have been sitting outside, which is what, which has been fantastic for the middle school.
It's great. It's to our benefit and it's very safe. So that's the best of, of both worlds. But, you know, unfortunately, one of the downsides of New England is that, that weather's going to turn.
Yeah, our kids are, Andrew, our kids, you know, they see the indoors as really restrictive. So as long as they can be outside, that's where they would rather be. So it's, you know, it's something that we can overcome it, but it's going to be a challenge for us.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Kate?
Hi, um, yeah, since we're talking about lunch and break, I know at least for my kids and a lot of kids that I've observed that they are very comfortable being outside long past when the adults are comfortable being outside in terms of coldness and weather. Is that going to continue to be an option for them to, to, to be outside and eat lunch? I mean, I'm thinking of like, when people go skiing and you eat lunch outside, teachers might not want to supervise it, but is it going to be an option for the kids?
Yes, at the high school it is, always has been actually. So in past years, we've had a group of kids who decided to eat outside unless it's snowing or raining sideways and we've allowed them to do that.
By the way, that hasn't always been the case at the high school. I don't think that was the case for my oldest daughter. So we, we've made progress in that way. We actually let the kids go and eat outside.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Great. Any, any other questions? The only, and, and my questions and concerns really do have to do with those operations pieces around lunch and around, you know, the traffic that you mentioned in the morning. So just as we begin to sort of move forward in our planning, in whatever timeline is deemed appropriate, um, I, I would want to understand how are we going to manage traffic in the morning? If we bring more than just the two grades or the one cohort back in a way that's safe for families, I want to understand, um, how do we manage buses? Do we have the capacity on buses before we make any decisions like that? I think that, you know, we can't invite kids to come back to school and then tell them that we can't provide transportation. And, you know, I know a lot of families are saying like, I'll drive them, but you know, it's part of our obligation to get kids to school. So I would want to make sure that that's a possibility. And then I would want to see the plan for where and how we would feed children if we had to feed them inside. Because at the end of the day, kids need break, they need lunch and, and where would we put them? You know, I know before we do that, we plan for all that, but I would want to see that really laid out before we invite kids back. So thank you guys so much for thinking about all of that. I, I think, I know they seem like small points, but you know, the world lives and dies on whether or not you can actually get in the driveway to school, right?
Yeah. No, you're, you're, you're so right, Maggie. And the thing about it is that, quite honestly, I haven't made a lot of friends within the administration or on the teaching staff proposing that we start bringing kids back because it's a ton of work. We will have to redo our bus routes at the elementary level. And just to get our, just to put it in perspective, we, we put 156 routes together trying to get this opening together. It's, it's a huge undertaking, just a small thing like that. And making sure that we have places for snacks, for example, with the littler kids. It's a huge, huge undertaking. So where, I don't expect everybody to understand the ins and outs of it, but there's, there's a lot that will have to go on behind the scenes and I really, really appreciate you, you're saying that, Maggie, because you should be asking for that. We, those things have to be established before we can do this.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item with high school um, and middle school headmaster updates.
Yeah, if I could, Maggie, I asked John and Scott, they had an idea that they wanted to bring forward and I thought it was, uh, it was, uh, we really are more than anything just keeping you in the loop on something that we've been talking about. And I, I'd turn it over to John and Scott to, to share what they were thinking.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Keough and Ms. Sharon. I think early this spring, when we start to see some really horrendous events going on in our country, we saw a lot of racial unrest. We saw a lot of protesting. We saw a lot of things happening. As an administrative team, you know, we have constantly been talking about cultural responsiveness and things that we can do to make our school and our communities more inclusive. And one of the things that as an administrative team at the middle and the high school, we talked about was the title of headmaster. And it's an interesting one because the, obviously the origins come from the UK and they typically mean the person who's head of school. But I think what it has also become is a point of reflection. And sometimes, you know, people can blame others to say, you know, you're being a little too literal about it. But we've received some data and some But we've received some data and some anecdotal feedback from our students, students of color in particular, who have said that they are uncomfortable with that term, headmaster, and that they do feel as though it has a negative connotation, that it's not inclusive. And obviously, Mr. Kellet, myself, Ms. Hurley and Ms. Keegan, we love our students and that's why we're in the business we're in. And we love all of our students and, and we truly do want an inclusive community. Not just for the majority of students, but for all the students. And so we talked about some real actionable steps that we could take. And I think that the country is, as a whole, is talking about that. What are some actionable things? Registering to vote, you know, actually taking a step instead of just saying, this is not something I'm comfortable with. This is not something I agree with. So it's actually taking some steps and and for some it may seem symbolic, but for us, we feel as though it is a really positive step. And, and that's changing our titles from headmaster to principal and assistant principal at the middle and the high school. And it would not only, we feel be a more inclusive title, but it would also be in line with our elementary colleagues at Pine Hill and Chicering. And we sometimes will look at intent versus impact. And there is probably was never a negative intent of that term, of that phrase, headmaster. Yet I think for some of our students, the impact has been quite different. And that's something that we feel we want to change. Recently in April, Braintree High School made that change. Back in 2015, Harvard University made that change to a number of their titles. And we feel as though it's time that we did in Dover Sherborne. Dover Sherborne has had a long story, tradition of academic excellence that precedes Mr. Kellet and I, and will continue well beyond Mr. Kellet and I. But we feel as though in this time, in this place, this is a necessary change to take some of those actionable steps to say that we want an inclusive community for all.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kellet, did you have anything you want to add or was?
I, I am in total agreement with Mr. Smith. I, I think the impact versus intent is what resonates with me. And, and I oftentimes will, someone will ask, well, what do you do? And I said, oh, I'm the headmaster or principal because it's, it can be confusing at times. So I for as long as I can remember, referred to myself as principal of the middle school. It's the, just the, the official title was headmaster. So I, I agree with all that was said.
Well, thank you. And thank you for the thoughtful, your thoughtful reflections on how you got to the place of wanting to do that, that it just says a lot about, you know, the work that community and just both of your characters and also your colleagues and Anna as well, that they support that change. You know, I know titles don't mean anything and yet titles mean a lot of things and are a big deal in, in work situations. And so the idea that really huge. Other comments or questions from our other committee members? Yeah.
Sorry, quickly, um, well, first of all, thank you both to John and Scott and to Anne and Anna for that. I think that's awesome. You may be covering this more in your report, but it's very related. John, especially, you wrote about the change, the way that the curriculum, especially in English and history, that teachers have been looking to create some changes, to create more inclusive curriculum. And I was wondering, you did mention that, that there were some teachers who are choosing to do some, have some of those conversations. And is there thought about making sure that everyone is involved in those conversations? And then also then beyond just English and history?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I think that it's not so ma- much a matter of we're allowing people to choose, but rather we're looking at things holistically. So, you know, English and social studies, when they're looking at those changes, they're looking at changing curriculum that would be across the board for a wide range of courses. As many of you know, we do a curriculum review. And it's great timing because the social studies department is in the middle of, of their curriculum review. And this is something that we have been installing in our teachers across all the departments. It just so happens that I think the places where it maybe shows itself more directly and more overtly is social studies in English. But I would argue that world language tackles it each and every single day, looking at culture and traditions and cultural awareness. We're also talking about next month, I'll have science and math present. And part of that obligation is to present things that they are doing in line, not only with their curriculum, but also cultural responsiveness. And it's a little more challenging in math and science. It's not as, as easy to have these actionable steps, but it really has to do with ensuring that all kids feel included. It could be things, steps that we take for access to mathematics and science of including all kids. It could be the texts that we choose. It could be, you know, some of the studies that we do. So it's not going to be so much a matter of for those teachers who choose. This is a direction that we're moving in. It's just like any organization, there are always some who are out in front of it and are championing it. And I don't want to stop them, but we're all going to have to be on board and, and the train's moving.
Agreed.
Thank you.
There are comments from question. Sorry, you moved around in my, my view here. Sorry.
That's okay. I had to switch rooms earlier because I, I wasn't getting reception. Thank you for that, Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellet. And along those lines, in your report, Mr. Smith, you wrote that you're looking into a series on how to leverage conversations with youth on race and equity. And is that, it's in the English section of your report? Is that something though, that will be, if you do choose to do it, will be open to everybody, all the students? Or is that something that even parents and community members would be able to access?
Yeah, I, I think we're always open to that. And, and you know, and there are times when I would lean on other district leaders to also help us with that with, you know, the parents and the community members. You know, I was simply just referring to some of the things that are happening day to day in our classes. But yes, absolutely. And, you know, we also lean on Monique to provide us with really helpful information. Also helps give us a real pulse of what's going on in our school. You know, another step that, and I'm coming out with my email blast tomorrow, but another step is I'm changing my school council makeup. Because this year we are doing things through Zoom, I want to ensure that I have a Boston parent on my school council. And as far as I know, Dover Sherborne High School has never had that. So.
That would be a great addition. Great, thank you.
The middle school will look to borrow, I don't want to say steal, but borrow that idea as well. I think it's a fantastic, fantastic idea.
Yeah. Zoom has made it easier certainly for Boston families to join in.
Yeah.
I think, I think I would agree. And, you know, I think not just for Boston parents, but also for working parents who have historically not always been able to participate in these, these kinds of meetings, you know, PTO meetings and so forth. I, I wonder a little bit whether or not even after this is over, if we don't consider some of these meeting formats to go on, you know, sort of into the future in order to, and to increase the amount of folks who can be sitting at the table for these kind of conversations. I know for us, you know, we run our meetings by open meeting law, but it sure has increased the amount of folks attending our meetings as well. So that, that's really a positive in terms of communication.
Yeah.
Other questions? Yep, Lynn, and then Anne.
So you'll, this will probably, I feel like we're, we're asking the questions before Mr. Smith has had, has gone through his report. So I don't, I don't want to preempt anything, but at the same time, I'll ask the question, I guess, since we're asking. But I mean, my question is basically the same as Anne's and, you know, sort of what, well, one is what are the resources that, that you're relying on to develop this more culturally competent, inclusive curriculum? And and can you elaborate a little more on how this, how this is applied across this, the system across the, the schools? Because yeah, I got the same sense as, as, you know, reading through it, that it was more of a, you know, whoever felt, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's not required, I guess, is the impression I got. But it's, so I'd like to just talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah. So, you know, what you should know, and I know Ms. McCoy is on here, is this isn't our first year that we're just developing cultural responsiveness. We've been doing this for several years and have had several school-wide assemblies, several school-wide initiatives, district initiatives, and actually initiatives in which we invited people from other school districts to attend. So, you know, I don't, I don't want.
Amazing, because my kids are integrated in them and yeah.
Yeah. And I, so I just don't want people to think that this is now suddenly, you know, it, it just started. We've been doing it for several years. It does morph and, and as education, it should, it has to be flexible, adaptable. So what are we looking at for resources? Well, certainly we, for across all the schools, we work very closely with Ms. McCoy at the central office, the assistant superintendent for curriculum. And we've been working with all of the administrators. And in terms of the curriculum, they go through the curriculum review in alignment with the assistant superintendent. So our English department, for example, will reach out to, you know, various organizations that can help, help us with this. I'll give you an example. The NAACP we have used, we have used the ADL in the past and continue to do so. So there's a number of groups that we use, but then we also look at the educational services that are available, whether it's through ASCD, you know, websites, educational organizations, bestsellers, you know, podcasts, we're looking at a wide range of things. And it's not a question of it's a teacher's choice, but what you do have to understand is sometimes our teachers will do some neat, creative things where they try something out. I mean, we've always been a district where we want some teachers to try some things out. And then you get some people to try that. And from there it builds and then more and more people end up using it. And then it becomes sort of the standard for the department and then ultimately the standard for the school. So this is an ongoing process. We won't be done with this at the end of this year and moving on to something else. Cultural responsiveness is not something you check a box. It's something that we have to look at addressing from the curriculum in the classroom to some of the activities we do with students outside, to athletics, to drama, so that it permeates our whole school culture. It's a challenge because there aren't a lot of schools that do it really well. And that's why it's an issue in education today. And that's why you can look and see there's thousands and thousands of books that are geared towards schools of how schools can do a better job with cultural responsiveness.
If I could just say one thing on that too, Lynn, this is partly my fault. Because actually, in the past, maybe a year or so, we started having, some months, we wouldn't have the headmasters actually give a presentation. And so, and this was actually one of them. So what you have is for, it's in the communications section because they're just giving you the report, but they weren't going to present on it. What they were really going to present on tonight was their decision to move forward with the principal thing. And what I was planning to do is include a presentation on where we're going with the diversity task force and really to entertain that same conversation around the kinds of things that you're asking about in our joint meeting with all the school committees together. And I personally think, I mentioned this to the chairs, that it should be a standing item, agenda item on our joint school committees moving forward. So that the work of the diversity task force can be shared with people. Because one of the things that we would hope that would come from the diversity task force, there's a couple of things, but one would be maybe a more systemized method for reviewing our curriculum or insisting upon our curriculum being reviewed and perhaps insisting upon it being reviewed under X model where we can be more assured. Because I don't, I don't know which model that would be. And that's why we need that task force. But the, the biggest challenge for me with the task force is not, is not getting it off the ground. It's, it's that there's so many people who are interested. It's trying to figure out, how do I take, you know, forty or fifty people and figure out who's going to be the kind of the subcommittee leaders and therefore the steering committee of the task force. So I'll talk a little bit more about that on Tuesday. But in terms of how we're attacking especially issues of race, especially issues of race in our curriculum. I, I know Beth can say more about this and I would ask her to, if that's okay with you, Maggie, since we're on the topic. I promise we'll be quick about it. But the, it's important for people to know that there is kind of a systematized method that we've been using. It may not be where it needs to be in the final form, but but as Beth has been leading the curriculum reviews, they have, they have been asked to look at their curriculum and how they would upgrade it using that, applying that lens. Is that accurate, Beth? Or how would you put it?
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's, that's one lens that we've, we've voluntarily adopted and another that we have, we have to because of our civil rights expectations with, with DSC. You know, as John said, this started a long time ago. I won't run through the whole history of it, but we did start with the curriculum leaders and department chairs doing training with ideas and how to adapt and upgrade the curriculum. So that was, I think, four years, three years ago at this point. You know, we do rely on ideas as an organization very heavily, teaching tolerance, primary source, facing history. There are many places that we pull from and teachers, you know, do additional coursework and professional development on top of that. I think that John's point was to highlight two departments. And it just happened to be English and History this time. I think the exciting thing is that what was put on the paper has been agreed to by everyone in that department. So what started out as pockets here and there have now spread so that everybody in English literature is, is agreeing to those topics and those books. Everybody in world history is agreeing to those topics in those resources. So I think that shows growth already across the departments. And I know that, you know, it was just a rotation, not to overwhelm you with too much, but I'm sure he's going to highlight some of the math and science and technology and the arts work moving forward. But there's still absolutely more work to be done. But, you know, I think we have a lot to be proud of so far.
And what is unfortunate from my standpoint is that much of the work that we've been really honing in on as a district around cultural responsiveness and around innovation, our portrait of graduate work, so much of that has been derailed frankly by the coronavirus and taken, it's, we've had no choice because there's only so much time in the day to take our eye off that ball a little bit, which really, really is disappointing and disheartening to me. But we're not, we are not done with this topic. I agree with John. This is, this is not going away. It's the reason I want that diversity task force in place. And hopefully for the long term, for our system and so that we, because frankly, you, we shared with you guys in the spring, some of the feedback that we'd gotten and it, and it wasn't nearly as positive as we would like. It, it hurt to think that some of our kids were not feeling comfortable in the school and had literally been mistreated, clearly mistreated because of their ethnicity or race. It's unacceptable. So we're, we're, we are honed in on it. It's just that it's been hard because of the coronavirus. But I, I was encouraged by the fact that teachers are still keeping their eye on that ball, John. So thank you for that.
If I could just add one more thing, and it's just timely in that the high school has a faculty meeting tomorrow afternoon and Ann Dever Keegan is one of nine district administrators who took the ideas course for administrators this summer. And we kind of, you know, furthered our district's plan, but she is presenting her capstone project from the course tomorrow and highlighting some great examples of what anti-racist curriculum is and what it's not. It's not talking about, you know, black Americans one month of the year. It's really more integrated than that. So she's going to kind of remind people of that, give some examples and then have them break out into groups and talk about the work that they're doing and the work that they want to do to make sure it is spreading. So timely discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McCoy. Thank you, Dr. Keo, Mr. Smith.
And you had your hand up and before we move forward, I just wanted to to see what was on your mind.
Yeah, I actually had something that, and I'm not sure this is quite the right time, but since it's about the building leaders, I wanted to circle back to what Janice Berry brought up and ask about the arts. Really quickly. And and I'm sorry, I'm looking at my screen and I don't. See any of the board of health members on anymore, there were before, but. Sort of to clarify a little bit for me, I'm. A big proponent of the arts and I think especially the performing arts are really important and for a lot of kids, it's central to their school experience. And I'm not an expert and I acknowledge freely acknowledge that. But I'm wondering, A, if some districts have seemed to be able to make it work and B, if we seem to have sports working. Why can't, why is there the arts, you were saying, Andrew, you even said you're not sure that singing is going to happen and I. Understand it's with the droplets and all, but I also know in athletics, kids breathe really heavily right on top of each other. So I I just sort of want to see where we are and what the thinking behind that is and see if there's something that we can do. To move the performing arts back into the. Into the day for students.
So. To give credit to John and Scott, they've been hearing that concern and have been bringing that concern forward. Again, as I mentioned before. Every time we peel another piece of the onion back, we get closer to the core and I think. I think that our board of health folks. Certainly our health and hygiene folks are nervous about that. They're nervous that the studies, I mean, I'm I'm pretty sure it's the CDC. If it's not the CDC, it's definitely deuce. I've said, they don't feel comfortable with the singing. Certainly not without masks and without considerable distancing and the same thing with certain instruments. Where if you're blowing into a trumpet, you are potentially, the CDC acknowledged this week. That this is a longstanding debate. This debate's been going on for decades. That that the aerosols are in fact a method of spread for the coronavirus. So it's not just the droplets. That's what we were told originally, right? It was all about the droplets and therefore, if you're six feet away, the droplets fall to the ground and you're okay. It's now they're saying that the aerosols that linger in the air, certainly in enclosed places especially. Or places without any breeze whatsoever. Are concerning because they hang around just like the mist from a vaporizer. You know, from a humidifier in your home, it hangs in the air, so. I think in my conversations with them, I don't think, I know, they are concerned about the singing. They're concerned especially about the singing. They're not concerned 100% about the musical instruments with proper distancing. And so John and Scott have been asking us for an answer on that and we expect to have one soon. And I don't think it's going to be one that says, oh, no, 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 performing arts, absolutely not going to be something like that. There, there will be performing arts returning and I do think there'll be performing arts returning within that timeline. That Janice referred to. The question is the extent of them. And I know, for example, that the. The teachers have asked to do their fall, do a fall play and to record some of it on site and. And do it mostly virtually, but they have a plan for that and we want to support that. It's it's more about, again, about the singing and the types of instruments that that we, that they, not we, that they think are safe. And we just don't have an answer right at the moment.
I, to to Anne's point, I would love, you know, at some point, I know he was here before, but I would love a memo or or something because I I do know. You know, Janice mentioned a few neighboring communities and one of them is is where I work, that kids are outside like twelve feet apart singing. And so I, you know, like, wear the masks and stuff, so I'm, I just would love it if, like, in the weeks to come, we could just kind of get some feedback on. On what, what is, if anything, you can do, like, you know, they have masks, you can put on tubas and all that stuff. Be awesome if the tuba could leave my attic. I'm just saying.
Can I just, I would love to also have. A little bit of clarification, just for, it's not just me, but I'm hearing this a lot from parents and also students. Kind of a little bit about then how sports are different from. From the performing arts in in the difference of like the aerosols, like get down into the that. Maybe not that much nitty gritty, but to some degree, because for kids especially, they're like. So my friends are out there doing that. I'm not allowed to do what. What I love and I don't, I don't see the difference. And I know that there is, once again, I'm not an expert, I just don't understand, so I'd love more detail on that, please. Thank you.
So A- Andrew, if I can touch upon this a little bit, and by no means, Ms. Hovey, am I an expert either. I think we've all been learning left and right, lots of stuff. So and and Ms. Sullivan is with us tonight too, and she certainly can add to this, so. There was an environmental affairs organization that looked at athletics, so there's actually a state organization that took upon athletics, not just high school athletics, but like youth sports and all of those different. Groups to look at, you know, different conditions and everything of that sort. So on top of that, then our state board, the MIAA, also had to approve it. And then once it made it past that, then our league actually had to look at what we would allow and not allow. And trust me, I I want our concert band and our chorus to be performing as soon as possible in person. And Mr. Kell and I have been asking, so you know, certainly we're advocating that, but we also understand. We're not the medical professionals and we have to rely upon them to give us good advice. So the athletes, even in competition, are wearing masks. So it's it's quite different. So if you're playing soccer or field hockey or cross country, you're actually wearing your mask. All during that competition. I think what makes it a little bit trickier. I am, I'm a terrible singer, so I wouldn't know, but I I would assume that having the mask on is is not, doesn't make it impossible, but could be challenging. And then the same goes for, you know, playing an instrument. And and Janice did show me some of those photos and like I said, I I would love to have that opportunity. Right now, we have some of the best numbers we've ever had in chorus and in concert band. So they have done incredible work to recruit, to get people fired up about it. We made some schedule changes, so. Scott Kell and I are absolutely in favor of getting this on board when we can. So I don't want the parents or others to think that we're holding this back. We're waiting word from the boards of health. We're waiting for medical information. For us to move forward. I did. Tell the fall play that they can move forward and we put some stipulations in that they can actually do some recordings on site. You know, here's where you need to wear your mask. If you're outside beyond the six feet. You know, we ideally would almost like it to be twelve feet. They could be working with. Recordings there and Carmel Bergeron and I are, you know, speaking every single day about this to make sure that it can work for our kids.
I I think it. Despite all the constraints we had with developing schedules for both buildings. And trying to, you know, the constraints within the buildings and then between the buildings. We did manage to create a situation where we could move forward with our eighth graders being with the high school students. And. I'm I'm with Mr. Smith in that we have made every effort to. To be in a place where we, these, these groups can perform. Once they're given the green light. In fact, at the middle school. We have our chorus kids can be pulled in smaller groups. By by Janice and Jeff to work. If they feel comfortable with it. No singing, you know, per the board of health and and the health and hygiene committee. But that is there for the ability to do that is there. It would be even smaller groups because. Because our kids are broken up into the hot and cold cohorts, but. That is there and then we have the Wednesdays figured out with the X block. Band chorus option, so. We want this to happen. I I mean, we want the kids back every day, as Mr. Guarini said. If we could, it's just there are so many constraints with the distancing and schedules.
Okay, um, thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate all the thoughts. I have Kate has her hand up and so I want to take her question and then we're going to move on to the athletic update.
I'll just be quick. Thanks, Maggie. I appreciate all the work that is going into this and I. I know it's tricky and I apologize because when when Mrs. Barry was speaking earlier, I was moving rooms, so. I didn't hear what she was saying because I wasn't on the Zoom yet. But I, you know, she was mentioning, I think, waiting for that six week mark and. So to echo what other people are saying, I'm. I'm curious and I apologize if she said it and I didn't hear it. What needs to happen at that six week mark to let us have maybe some time outside before the weather gets too cold? And then another question and. I don't think it can be answered tonight, but. Moving forward, I I appreciate how hard it was. To make the schedule work for this, for the region. But with the band and chorus on Wednesday, it looks like we're never, very possibly never going to be in on. Wednesday, so then it becomes the issue of if in the spring, things are better, God willing, then. The kids aren't able to get to school for those things, so becoming a transportation issue.
That that's one of the the roadblocks that we will have to try to to navigate around.
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly what I was going to say, so we. There are a host of things that went into building this schedule. For example, changing our blocks to eighty minute periods and. And having sophomores in on Monday, Tuesday and juniors in on Thursday and Friday, all of those and then trying to do our other programming on Wednesday. All of those things are now subject to change once this. Once, once we come into the next stage for reopening at the regional level. We have to look at that. We have to look at Wednesdays. Do we need the Wednesdays? We've been advocating that the Wednesdays are good because they keep the two cohorts separated and we clean within those two cohorts. But if we're bringing everyone back, we may not need to do that anymore. What's the point? We're doing the cleaning anyhow at night, so we're enlarging our cohort essentially, so. That means Wednesdays could change. That means the schedules could change. This is why I was saying that. You know, making any kind of adjustment back to to a more in person. Has a lot of. Components and it's logistically a ton of work. We were supposed to be, our goal was to have created a system that was nimble enough to adjust. Right? So if we had to go remote, we go remote. If we wanted to go back in person full time, we should be able to do it. I think it might be easier to go remote from where we are than it is to go in person from where we are. I don't think at the time that we were making our plans, there was as much enthusiasm. Realistic enthusiasm for more in person, because I think when we were making these plans, we we weren't confident that we were going to have. Moving to in person, not remote. We thought it would go the other direction, so it's just, it's not insurmountable. It just has to be. Has to be worked toward and 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 getting back to Anne's point about. Athletics versus performing arts. I don't think it's fair that this is the reality in our state, but clearly. Clearly, people lobbied the commissioner and the governor to make sure that athletics got going. That's clear, because you'll recall when we first started, I was not on board with athletics. Because I thought the most important priority was to get our kids in person, period. And there's a big part of me that still feels that way. I did come around to the position because I can also hear that other argument, which is that this is so important for their well-being. And I think that's your point, Anne, about these kids' complete picture well-being. That's where they get a lot of their satisfaction. And that's important, so we we've got to fight for those things and you're right to raise it. I don't think it's fair the way that it's played out. I. I would expect that to be a question that comes to me in Kio's corner next week when the kids speak with me, because they they always hit me with those ones that. That they've been dying to ask and that will be one of them. So I mean, it's, it's. We want to get there and and we will and I I just, you know. What's really difficult is that. Matt Vitale, Matt Beavers and Kay Peterson. They're busy and they're they're like full-time employees for us. We're leaning that on them on a lot of different things and so. We, they know that this is high on our list of priorities and again, that's to John and Scott for. Staying honest, but we we will get some answers for Janice and for all the folks who want to see a better return to performing arts, I promise.
All right. Thank, thank you all, all of you and and you know, I think that point is not lost on us. This is. Extremely complicated and it's, it's like every time you turn the corner, there's another set of things and you know, I. Overall, you guys have done all of the the faculty and all of the administration have done just such a thoughtful job. Getting this going and getting it going in a meaningful way. And you know, just before we move on to athletics, you know, my N of one. Person that is is in my house, that's, that's, you know, your customer there. Said the other day, you know, I I. I don't, I know that they made that schedule change to long blocks. For to accommodate hybrid learning, but that has revolutionized my school experience. To have long classes, but not every class every day, has changed my entire stress level and my ability to manage things. And gosh, like, I am so grateful that they did that and I hope it lasts forever way after coronavirus is over. So, you know. To the extent that the things that you guys are doing is actually having a really measurable effect. On actual school experience of one, one person, I just want to say huge thank you to you for that. Moving on to athletic updates and I think that's Ms. Sullivan.
Yep. Um, so since we talked last. We started golf on the twenty first, cross-country field hockey soccer on the twenty sixth. Pleasantly, everything has been really smooth. It's pretty amazing to see what structure can bring. Versus if they were going to the field on them, by themselves, having their coaches there, structured practices. We have not had any issues with students and coaches wearing masks. They're pretty accommodated to the social distancing. They're getting used to some new cultures with, you know, we've had to shoot down. Couple different pasta dinners. We've gotten emails about those and. Just, you know, getting used to this new culture. I've not been able to do that this year, but they've been. They've welcomed it and they understand the reasoning behind it, so those are. Just some new things that they've had to get used to. One of the challenges actually is not really from our students, it's. Kicking out community members off the track. After school. That's probably been one of our biggest challenges of monitoring that. Sue Connolly and myself throughout the three thirty to five thirty practice lot, but then on the weekends, you know. Our teams have been going really for eight hours, you know, between five teams, so. That's been something new for them to get used to, because I think during COVID, they were used to, or during quarantine, they were used to coming here every day and walking whenever they want, so. We have signs up all over and people don't always read signs, so we're actually making, we're going with a company to get a couple bigger signs for our sandwich boards. And hoping those help a little bit. But yeah, that's probably been our biggest challenge is just the community members used to walk in the track, but we have two hundred and seventy seven student athletes playing a sport right now. Across boys cross country, girls cross country, girls and boys soccer, field hockey and golf. Golf's in the middle of their matches right now for the next couple of weeks and they've been going well, playing foursomes. As a team instead of usually you do two and two, so that's kind of something new for them to get used to, but. Dedham this weekend was supposed to happen for the other five sports that got postponed to the final weekend, which is November fourteenth and fifteenth, and that was Dedham's call, actually. That was. Their board of health pushed back their start date to October third, so they just start practices this week and they're not ready to play games yet, so. We pushed those games to the last weekend, so we actually have another week of practices, another week of. Getting used to it where everyone else other than us in Dedham will be playing this weekend, so. It's kind of nice. We can see how they do this weekend and how the games go and learn from them. And then with that, so this past. And then with that, so this past week, the EEA, that Massachusetts Energy and Environmental Affairs came out with Governor Baker and extended the guidelines for outdoor events from 50 to 100. So before, when it was 50, that's, that was pretty much our playing area, right? It was 20 players per team, two coaches per team, two officials, an athletic trainer, myself, and an assistant. So that was pretty much 50. So now you're allowed to have 100. And so with that, the athletic directors met in our league and decided to push forward allowing home-team spectators only, two adults per player with the approval of the principals. So I went to the principals, they approved it, and then I talked to Dr. Kio, who met with our Board of Health, and they really want us to work towards this very slowly. And luckily, we have this weekend to really see how it goes for everyone else. And then cross-country doesn't actually have a home meet until Halloween. So we have a couple of weeks with cross-country to see how that goes. And I'll really be monitoring and talking to the other athletic directors this weekend to see how their home attendance span goes. So with that, some of the guidelines for the home spectators is that they must have a mask on upon entering the facility, must remain on for the entire time they're in the facility. Spectators must also practice social distancing. All spectators must stay outside of the fenced and track area. Our bleachers are going to be closed off, so parents are going to, if we're able to move forward with this, they're going to have to bring their own seats in order to sit. And then I would also block off the player side so that they're all sitting really on the visitor's side of the facility. But I think that's about it for athletic updates. It's really been really nice to see the kids go out there, and their moods have been great. And they're really accommodating to every, all the modifications that we have. This weekend, we have a couple scrimmages where we'll have some refs come out and really work with the players on the new modifications. These are in-house scrimmages, so we're just playing ourselves, but we're going to have some referees out there to really help them with the new rules and getting used to that. So other than that, I think that's about it. If there's any questions?
Questions from the committee?
I will just say, Emily, I really appreciate the effort that the kids are making. I have been trying to find time while we still have some daylight in the afternoon to take a walk, get some air over in Medfield. I've seen the kids out running. They are, first of all, they're having a blast, you can tell. But they're also really doing a nice job keeping their distance from each other. The coaches deserve a ton of credit. They're, in one case today, I saw Steve Hart out with the kids, and it was a pretty sizable group of kids. So I'm really psyched that we did that. I think it was a good move on our part as a system. You know, as far as the fans go, again, it's, it's, you know, when we talk about the layers of protection, the distancing, the hand washing, the masks, those are what keep us safe. And the same holds true for all of this, the pace at which we do things. So, but I will, I promise to get some answers on that as well, on the spectators' question. I have to admit, I think that's a lower priority when we think about the other things that we're talking about, like getting our performing arts kids out and stuff like that. But it's not a non-issue. It does matter. People obviously love to go see those games and stuff. So in truth, I feel, I feel badly for our kids in general, because they're not having the normal school experience. And even if we bring our kids back, they're not going to have the normal school experience. It's just, it's part of this pandemic, and it's awful. But I give everyone a lot of credit for trying to make it happen, because it's been good.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Kio. Any, any other questions from committee members? Okay. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to, to Ms. Sullivan, to all the coaches, to all of the folks. You know, I know it's no small thing to tell kids that they need to continue to stay separate. They tend to want to huddle and what for you. And so I think for all the efforts that folks are doing and to keep those habits going, they will pay off for us and hopefully in everyone's good health as we move forward. Thank you. Dawn, we have warrant report.
Yeah. So as you recall, your September warrant report was closing out your fiscal year 20 warrant. So tonight's report actually are all the fiscal year 21 warrants to date.
Thank you. Which is, other questions about warrants? Okay. Well, then we're moving on to Dawn.
Exactly. Move on to me. So, so you have in your, your packet that you just got today, and I apologize for that. But we are just scrambling to get everything completed. Your financial statements as of September 30th, even in a normal year, this is always like a first pass because school has, you generally just open, we're just getting everything set up as far as payroll. And throw on to that, you know, the situation we're in this year, and it's become even a little more complicated. I think the good news is, is that there's very few red numbers on your sheet to date. And as I had mentioned in my report, I think one of the real benefits to what some of the expenses we've been encumbering with the reopening is the CARES reopening grant that we were allocated. So that has been a huge savings or a huge impact for us because we've been able to charge a lot of the expenses that you see as far as PPE, the tents, the additional technology that we had to purchase. A lot of the software that we're purchasing because of remote learning is all being charged to the grant. And so I will be bringing forward to you at your November meeting sort of a recap of where that money has been spent, because if you'll recall, all that money has to sort of be accounted for by December 31st. So there is a timeframe on when it needs to be expensed. So that's what we're trying to do is put everything that we, that is COVID-related into that grant, because then we'll lose access to those funds after December 31st. On the just general, I think I mentioned to you back in September that it was the Chapter 70 picture was much rosier than we had thought back in the spring. And so in your financial statement, you'll see that although we reallocated $200,000 from Chapter 70 to be sort of covered by excess and deficiency, we're actually ahead right now by like $160,000, because our shortfall, based on the initial governor's budget back when we did your budget, we're only short about $37,000. So that's great news. We're still waiting for the cherry sheets to be released for transportation. So I don't really have a good feeling of where that's going to go. I think they're trying to figure that out. But I will, we'll hopefully have an update for you at the next meeting, because technically, those would have already been out. I'll bring to your attention the high school parking fees. So given that we're in the hybrid model and we only have students here right now two days a week, we opted not to assess parking fees this year. So that will be sort of a negative variance on your financial statements. If school changes and there's a different scenario, we'll relook at that. The positive side is that we are still doing either in-person or virtually your athletics and your activities. So all those fees will still be collected by those students who participate in those events. So that is a positive news, because we could have said, you know, that would have been negative also. I don't really have much more to say. I think my report summarized it up. We're in the beginning stages here. Every month from now, for like the next two months up until we do your budget in December, we'll have a clearer picture of the financials, because it will continue to encumber additional expenses as we have time to take a look and figure out what our projections are for fiscal year 21.
Thank you, Dawn. What questions do you have, Kate, Anne, or Lynn? Yep, Anne.
So Dawn, when you start looking at increasing, the potential of increasing the region to four days a week, will there be significant, or do you foresee significant budgetary impact on that?
Probably, I mean, not, because, right, it's just pivoting from being home to being here. I think we'll have to deal with some space issues. As you know, we have storage, we have stored a lot in some of our interior classrooms right now. So we would have to either rent storage units, because most of that stuff will continue to be stored. So that could be a little bit of an uptick. We're sort of getting a little bit of a flavor of what bringing back more students is with the elementary Phase 2 that we're working on right now. So we're trying to assess the busing, you know, how are we looking for buses? And sort of classroom space there. So I think by doing this phased approach, we're learning as we go along, which will make each next phase that much smoother. And we say if we could go back and do this all, you know, again, we could even do things like probably more time efficient for the, for the real reopening. I mean, as you heard Andrew said, we did do over 150 bus routes. Maybe we would have done them differently had we thought about all these different phases. Because basically, for the elementaries, we're starting from scratch again. But we've learned, and so now we're doing the whole K through 5 bus route, and we'll just fix the 4 and 5. So when we hopefully do bring back 4 and 5, that work is already done. So we're learning a little bit each way, but I don't think that, you know, we haven't been going through a lot of PPE. People have been really great about bringing their own mask. That was a huge unknown when we started, but we have a really good supply. And so I don't necessarily see we'd be spending more money on some of those items. And then the cleaning, we have a good, I think we have some good protocols. We'll probably make sure we utilize all the funding that we have in the grant to stock up on some of the additional cleaning supplies. But again, I think we'll still have operating funds left to cover some of that. So I think we're in really, actually really good shape. And from the regional standpoint, you really didn't have to add a lot of staffing at all to accommodate the plan, which I think is not what some of the other school districts saw. So that's also making our financial picture look much better, that we don't have, you know, other than say, our floating nurses that we're incorporating right now. We're really running with the staff that we had already in place with your fiscal year 21 budget.
Thank you. Lynn or Kate, anybody? I guess my question is sort of piggyback on Anne's. Looking at the ideas of thinking about if we were to move to more days in person, do you anticipate needing to increase your budget for substitutes? You know, right now, if teachers, you know, are feeling like a sniffle, they can teach from home three of the five days a week. But if they feel sniffle, then statistically, they're going to have to be out more. So is that something that would be impacted?
It would, but you know, we, we have a sort of a very comfortable substitute budget already to cover us. And I know that we have some salary savings already in the budget from a couple of staffing changes that would help cover if for some reason, we had an increase on our substitute. I think the biggest issue with substitutes is not going to be, do we have the money, but do we have the substitutes?
That was my next question. Do we have a robust subpool right now?
I would argue yes. With all of our pleas to parents, we've had several come forward. And even friends, their friends in other communities have come forward. So I feel like we have a good starting place.
But we also really haven't been tested.
Right.
We haven't been tested the way we might, like some of our neighboring systems have really been tested. You know, if somebody's showing symptoms and they get tested, or someone in their family is sick, it could change quickly. So we're cautiously optimistic. We've been, we've been lucky. And along those lines, we've done really well. Dover Sherwin's in a good position. So and I quite honestly, for life, and we can't figure out how some of the other systems around us have spent as much money as they have making this happen. We tried to figure that out one day. We just couldn't.
I know. I felt like, what am I missing? Because we're not, we're managing. Which, and I think part of it too is that our, our assets here, our buildings are in good shape. So we, to date, have incurred substantial, you know, repairs or upgrades to the buildings, which I think like Maggie, you know, Needham, you know, had a little delay because they were doing some significant work like that. We are awaiting our report from our engineers. There probably will be some cost associated with it. But I feel like we still have money left in the grants and some of the recommendations they may have for us, maybe things that we should be doing anyway. So then that would just be part of our operating budget. And we have a hefty maintenance reserve that we carry on an annual basis for the region's campus. So hopefully, that won't be anything that we can't manage with the funds that we currently have. I will just add, if there was any situation where the region did need more money, our other avenue is tapping into the towns with their municipal CARES grants. We're doing that right now with the elementaries, because that's very clean, right, to pull from them. The regions would be a little bit more of a project. So I have floated that idea out to both towns, but if I don't need it, then there's no need to sort of have to go that, that route. So we have about another month before they put forward their Plan 2 of their, or Phase 2 of that grant. And well, by then, we should know if there's anything unexpected that we wouldn't be able to cover.
Thank you. And I mean, to your point, I think that it's important for the community to know that, you know, we're in a hybrid right now, but we're unusual compared to other districts all around us in that our children's teachers are with them live every day. So when they're in school, they're with them, and then when they're home, those teachers are with them. And that's not typical. Most school districts have split their classes into cohorts, and, and that's allowed them to go into school in a smaller group. But it's meant that there's real, there's real logistical and just time challenges, what to do with those kids when they're home, that we're not faced. And I think the fact that we've had the privilege to do that really speaks to the commitment of this community, these, both these communities over many years. Because having an appropriate amount of space and classrooms that are generously sized, maintaining class sizes that are relatively small compared to most communities is the only reason why this has been able to work at all. And, and so to the, along with what I think, as the more I think about it, is a rather ingenious plan of keeping the kids together with their teachers in the 2 and 3. So to the extent that I know Mrs. McCoy and all our school administrators were big, were the geniuses behind that plan, I have to say that's a huge thanks, because it does make us more nimble. It makes us more effective, whether we're in live or whether we're remote. And it also has allowed our students who are remote, remote only for lots of reasons, some of which, you know, the ones that speak to me the most are our students who are immune compromised, who have been able at the middle school and high school, I believe, to be very closely aligned in their classes with their classmates. So another thing that I'll be curious about as we move forward is what happens to those students who are remote only when we go back more live? Are they somehow left behind? So I'll want to understand how we make sure not to disadvantage those students as we move forward in this, in this planning. So thank you. Other, other, any other comments before we move on from, yeah, Anne?
I just really quickly want to echo what you just said, Maggie, though, to say thank you to the leadership also for all the planning. You know, Dawn, you and Andrew were just saying, we don't know how. And I think part of the reason how is because of all the hard work of the leadership team of the reopening task force of teachers. So I want to really, really express my gratitude to you for all of that work. It's paying dividends now.
Thank you for saying that, Anne. But honestly, I also, I don't think we should leave out of the equation the fact that our teachers are incredibly professional. And that's because of the relationship that you, as the school committee, have established with them. I mean, they've been incredibly professional throughout this process. And sometimes they have to hold their nose at the table when they're hearing ideas being put forth, because they don't necessarily like it, but they've been professional. Some systems, their teachers aren't showing up. And just imagine, it's almost like a, like a strike, some of the bigger systems in the state especially. So we're lucky, we're lucky in that way. Our teachers have been Uh, some of the bigger systems in the state especially. So we're lucky, we're lucky in that way. Our teachers have been incredibly cooperative in the DSEA. Um, you know, those of you who are on the MOU committee, know, uh, you've been in the conversations. They're, they're team players and uh, I consider that a real blessing and we're, we're lucky in that way.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think that having the opportunity um, to work with such excellent professional educators who, who are creative and who are thinking hard about lots of ways to engage our kids, it's really important that we remember that. And today is World Teacher Appreciation Day, UNESCO's World Day. So thank you to all of our amazing, dedicated, thoughtful, creative teachers today, really.
What a segue.
I know, right? All right. Moving forward. October enrollment report. I'm very curious about this because we have, you know, like all different stuff going on here for who's going where.
Well, so no, uh, no really big news, Maggie, and I, I apologize for that. This is really just the, the, the actual hard numbers of where we are for October first. I don't have any comparison data. Um, but you can see at the region with eleven hundred and eighty-one kids, we're pretty much in line with where we usually are. Uh, not any huge fluctuations one way or other. We did not break this out into who's remote or who's hybrid. Uh, we can do that though, uh, if you'd like, uh, at the next meeting.
Yes, it's not an emergency, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's um, the, the, the numbers in, in the communities seem to kind of ebb and flow. E- e- every year it seems to go that way where we'll, we'll hear, oh, my God, everyone's moving out, people's houses are selling and and the people who move out, the people move in kind of almost with the same number of kids. So I, I don't see any huge uh, shifts there, but um, I think usually we just, at this meeting, just kind of roll out where we're at. And then we do something a little more detailed as we move into the budgeting process where you can see where they are at which grades. And um, I do think it's, it's curious that uh, that our numbers have crept up a little bit in class sizes uh, in the, the past couple of years. Um, not really sure why that is, at least according to that Boston Magazine report, which was based, I think, on most recent data of two thousand seventeen. So it's been a while. Um, but we'll wanna look closely at our class sizes as we go forward. It does matter. Uh, we benefited from it during this crisis, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
So if you just let me know what else you need in that regard uh, on this.
And I'll just mention, if there's anyone that's worn advisory out there, remember, these are sort of the unscrubbed numbers. So um, don't go start calculating your assessment percentage quite yet because uh, they do have a tendency to clean them up just a little bit. But uh, just to let you know, based on our projections, this is within like ten students of what our budget was built on. Um, and so that is, we're definitely still in line with uh, everything. It's interesting, I did take a look to see where we were compared to the assessment numbers and Sherburne um, in our assessment model for fiscal year twenty-one had five hundred and twenty-three students. Exactly. So they're exa- um, sober those down a little bit. So that's uh, that will tell the tale of um, of how the, the percentages go. But just know that these will change usually a little bit when we go and just clean it up.
Do, do we, just regarding enrollment, do we keep any exit data as students unenroll? You know, as to whether or not they were leaving to move to a different town or to go into a private school. I know, you know, a lot of the families that are concerned, you know, tell me about all those families that are leaving us to go to other programs. And I am just sort of curious what the numbers are behind that.
The, we, I don't have those exact numbers, Maggie, but we can, we definitely have access to them. I have seen some of the um, the uh, kind of exit uh, interview form uh, where we asked families why. And I have heard some of that. But uh, more often than not, it's, it's the same kind of thing that we're used to seeing, which is uh, you know, not every school's a good match for every kid. And uh, we, we have families who can afford to select. And that's usually the case. It's not necessarily where they, they, they felt the best fit. So they, they opted out and not in huge numbers, but you know, there's, it's surprising to me in affluent communities how many families will choose private schools over exceptional public schools, but they do.
And I do think we saw a little bit of that this year because of the guarantee of more in-person um, uh, uh, opportunities with some of the private schools. Definitely, I saw that a little bit at the elementary and we were just looking at some of the numbers.
Yeah, and I've heard that as well anecdotally.
And I mean, I think to your point, you know, not every school is a great fit for every kid. And you know, when families have the opportunity and means to do it, you know, you gotta do what's the right thing for your kids. So I appreciate that as well. Just curious and wanna kind of understand, you know, what the comings and goings. I know I've also known of families who, who said, you know, gosh, you know, there's gonna be hybrid learning this year. Anyway, I'd rather have my tax dollars at work and enroll my kids in public school. So it goes both ways, you know? All right, um, moving on to the consent, consent agenda. Um, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of our meeting minutes from September eighth.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Kate Potter. So um, Anne Hovey made the motion and Kate Potter seconded. Um, all in favor, I'll do a roll call vote. Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Um, Michael Jaffe and Judy Miller are not with us tonight. Um, next item on the agenda is just the communications for members information, which were both the reports from Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellett. Um, I agree, you know, I understand they didn't make pro um, presentations tonight. Um, for anyone who's reading the packet, um, which is available online, I wanted to just point out um, some really thoughtful reflections on the beginning of the school year from both Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellett. Um, a lot of conversation around new curricula at the high school and um, you know, use of um, lots and lots of new really dynamic technology in the middle school. And um, you can see that all the professional development that teachers did in the first two weeks of school has really paid off in, um, you know, the kinds of things that are happening in classrooms. So Ms. McCoy, you're here. Thank you so much for organizing that. And um, to all the teachers and administrators who've um, really been investing in their practice. Um, we appreciate it. Um, items for the November fifth meeting, are there things um, that members would like to see on the meeting? I know we spoke a little bit tonight about things that we'd like to maybe talk about, but any other items that we ought to be thinking about for that agenda?
And just so you know, it's November second.
Oh, November second.
But no one's writing it down on their calendar incorrectly.
Gotcha. The meeting will be on November second.
Which is a Monday.
Two thousand twenty. That's another error.
Oh, wow. Okay, yeah, okay. November second, two thousand twenty, no time traveling here. And it's a Monday, which is not our usual night. So you know, for people who watch Monday Night Football, they're gonna have to make some hard choices. Um, any uh, agenda items that folks would like to see?
If we think of any, can we get them to you?
Of course you can.
Thank you.
Nowhere to find me. Um, and you know, we'll certainly follow up on the items that people ask questions about tonight. Um, all right. Well, without further ado, then I think our business here is finished. May I invite a motion to adjourn?
Anne Hovey, so moved.
Great. Do I have a second?
Lynn Collins, second.
Lynn Collins. So Anne Hovey moved, Lynn Collins, second. Um, Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Anne?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. And with that, we are adjourned at eight eleven PM. Thank you so much for joining us. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.